Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of July the 1st. Our council is all present with the exception of Vice Mayor Horetia, who I think will be joining us virtually. Frankie, are you? There you are. Frankie, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm on, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. First item on our agenda is to review our agenda for tonight's council meeting. And then we're also going to review the agenda for the July 8th council meeting because Thursday of this week, obviously, is the 4th of July, so I think Mr. Brady, you're going to tell us there's no study session on Thursday. And we are having council meetings tonight and then next Monday night because we pushed the two council meetings to the beginning of July to have a little bit of a summer break for staff. So again, council meetings tonight and Monday night, no study session Thursday, so that's why we're going through the agendas for both tonight's meeting and July the 8th. So, council, please look at that document. Mr. Brady, is there anything that staff would like to give a presentation on?
Mayor, I think for the July 1st agenda, I think you all covered quite a bit of that last Thursday. So unless there's any questions on that, we do have a few presentations for the July 8th agenda.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Spilsbury.
I just have two quick questions. On 5A, I know we talked about it, is there anyone that was affected by this? I know that was just a mistake that didn't get put on there, and this is a cleanup thing, but is there anyone that was affected during that?
Is there a specific application out there today?
Time period?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Spilsbury, we actually do have one application at Falcon Airport that is in the LI that is affected because of that. And then there is another project up in District 5 off of Thomas that also is in the LI that this would allow them to be permitted uses in those LI districts.
And is it something that has pushed their application back because of it?
For the project in Falcon, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, for the project in Falcon Field, it hasn't really delayed that project. The project on Thomas, we were actually going through a rezoning process with them, and we won't have to go through that process now.
Okay. And then no one else that you're aware of has been affected by that?
Just those two.
Okay. And then maybe this, my next question, just on 5B, did we talk about 5B? It's the downtown. We talked about that. Did, and so, I'm sorry, did we do like a community engagement on that at all as far as the boundary change? We didn't talk about that specific aspect of it, right? This was only like three or four days ago, but, because the boundaries are changing for what the overlay is, right? Isn't that what it says?
Correct.
Revising the boundaries, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, notice was sent out every property owner within that boundary, the new boundary, to notifying them of the change. We received two phone calls. They were all just informational, trying to, just to understand what was going on, no opposition.
Okay. And they, were there, is there a lot of properties that that affects?
Oh, you're testing me. It was several hundred properties that were in the middle.
That are added, right?
Yeah. Well, in total, there's several hundred that, and added, it wasn't, maybe doubled the size of it, so.
Okay.
There's a total of 500 and just under 600 properties in downtown that are part of the special improvement district area, and this is less than that, so I would think it's in the range. I'm sorry, I don't know, I have the exact number, but I think it's in the range of a couple hundred to 300 properties.
When I was looking at the map, I couldn't quite tell how many that would be. And is there like an estimate of like how many days a year this would affect? Do we have like an average of how many days there's a special event?
We have, I should have been more prepared.
Sorry.
From a private special event perspective, specifically in the area that's being added, there is one special event that is a monthly special event, so it would be at 12 for the...
Once a month?
Once a month for the Mercado, which is happening at Republic Enpanada. Other than that, we don't have other events in this added area that have made requests yet, so if it's similar to the existing area, the most that we get from events are recurring monthly.
So is there, with this new proposed amendments, is there a max number of days that there could be in the year?
Not a max number of events per year, but there's a maximum number of days per event. So no single event can be greater than four days without a special use permit still.
But no max to like how many days of the year it might be or whatever. Okay. So, but you feel like the community engagement went out and everyone had the opportunity to voice any problems that they...
Jeff, I mean, specifically, what, there's some city property we're trying to include. Let's talk about that, right?
Yeah, so there are, there are, again, there's the definitions that we added related to special events sponsored by the city or produced by the city that exempts the city from the limitation on the four days per, four days per event. So we, as a city, can exceed and go a full month for Mary Main Street without a special use permit. A private event producer would still require a special use permit to go exceed greater than four days for a single event, but there wouldn't be a limitation on the number of events that they could hold on their property.
It does this pick up Pioneer Park.
And it does pick up here in our...
That's what's not in there today.
Right. And I saw that on the map, that that whole, and because there's a lot of residential around there, I wondered if, I was kind of wondering if anyone...
But it also helps with Pioneer Park, it also helps with the temple when they're having their events.
Oh.
Because right now, I mean, there's some, you know, they have a board, is it a Board of Adjustment ruling on the...
Special use permit.
This clarifies, it makes it easier for them to not have to look at that licensing permit also.
And that would be for the Easter pageant and the lights, or any big event, I guess?
So the Easter pageant has a special use permit today, and then the Christmas lights have been operating the last couple of years under their temporary use permit. But this could benefit them, both of those events, in that they would just have to go through the special event licensing process.
So every resident around the temple and around Pioneer Park got a notice of this?
Only if the properties were being added into the events overlay area.
So it's a lot of properties, but it's two major property owners.
Yes.
Oh, but it, so, okay, I guess I, so the community, I guess I'm thinking it's like a zoning case or something where the area within 500 feet all got notified, is that not the case?
We just notified within the boundaries.
Okay.
So it's essentially, when you go, look at the T that you added, the sideways T, right? You go down from, what is it, Shrine, out east, and you're really just, you're mostly picking up from the big properties, right? Pioneer Park, the Temple grounds, and then kind of that strip in between.
The large, the larger multifamily developments in which there could be event space within their development.
Right. So you think about, not the growth, the...
Melody on Main.
Melody on Main, and they could have events inside of their complex.
I guess I just assumed that, like, if you lived across the street from Pioneer Park, you'd be notified that it was going to change, but maybe it's not that big of a difference or...
So Pioneer Park isn't subject to this as it is today. Pioneer Park, because it's a park, it's a park use agreement.
People expect it.
So you could have event, Pioneer Park is not subject to the current zoning ordinance as it relates to special events. They are, they are a park use, and that goes through a separate process.
Okay. And I guess, Councilmember Duff, since this is your district, that you haven't received any, maybe people don't know about this, I guess, but...
I've had complaints for a long time on the reverse side, that it's so much process in order to hold, you know, recurring events that they don't even bother, and it's too much, and it's too long, it's a too-longer process, too many permits.
Okay.
And they're frustrated, you know, the merchants in downtown as far as holding their own events, so I've had the opposite experience.
But, and so you haven't gotten residential calls or businesses that are upset about crowds, traffic noise?
No, a lot of it is just, the current events cleans that up, that they don't have to go through multiple permissions and...
So we're not maybe necessarily even expecting that there would be a ton more things added, just that it's going to be easier to simplify? I like the simplify, believe me.
When you're in downtown and you're in these areas, there's kind of an expectation, it's a lively area with a lot of activities.
That's going to be louder.
And we're trying, we were trying to address, Councilmember Duff is right on point, to simplify the process so that we could encourage more of these activities.
Yeah.
As opposed to the process being kind of more of a hindrance and making it more difficult because of the bureaucracy you have to go through to get these approved.
Okay. I definitely like that, because I think we should do that in a lot of areas, so, okay.
And if I may, one thing that I think is very important is that these events are still subject to a special event license. So we have standards and guidelines that our special event office is looking at when they're reviewing special event licenses. So if somebody has a lot that they, the zoning may allow them to hold a special event, but is it appropriate for that? Or is the lot sized right correctly? Or can they actually accommodate all the, all the event that they want? So it, while it takes away the zoning requirement, it doesn't take away the oversight the city still has to ensure that the events is being, are being produced properly, and gives us the ability to then, after events are done, to consider whether or not that was a good event producer that actually warrants having additional events.
But I'll say this, that's the concern on staff, we're still trying to simplify that process.
Okay.
Because sometimes we can overwhelm people with porta-potties and traffic, and so we're trying to manage that also.
And it was confirmed, I misspoke, we did, we did notify a buffer of 500 feet as well.
Oh, we did. Okay, okay. That would make more sense to me.
And that does explain one of the women that, or one of the property owners that came to us, because she was across the street and was questioning.
Okay. That makes me feel much better about it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Other questions regarding tonight's council meeting? Anything regarding tonight's council meeting?
I was just going to say, Mayor, thank you on 6B, we're going to look at an infill development there by atmospheric architects and, and working with Mary and her team. You know, I'm supporting this, it's a multifamily living area, there's some apartments in the area, but some of the color schemes, I was quite surprised, the tangerine colors there, but it will really stand out in the area and uplift the area. So I just wanted to let council know that I'm all in support of this, and there's some other amenities there that'll tie into the SRP canal and multi-use path eventually through there, but that's by Mr. Boyle and his team. So with that, I just wanted to bring that up.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, council. Anything else about tonight's meeting before we move on to July the 8th? All right, I know, Mr. Brady, should we have the staff presentations for the July 8th agenda?
Sure, we can do that. Oh, he left. I was going to say, you should have stayed there. So, and while Jeff's coming up, let me just let the council know that on the July 8th agenda, item 3A has, the applicant has withdrawn their application on 3A, and reminder that when we, on 3E, the approval of that, or the approval of that item is actually a disapproval of that, a liquor license. And we're still working through, there's quite a bit in that caption, working through many of those outstanding issues, requirements of permits and outstanding debts related to the city, so our recommendation is to disapprove the liquor license as mentioned on 3E. And now Jeff's here to present on two items that are on...
Ms. Spilsbury, do you have a question?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I guess, I was looking at the language of 3B that says it will revert to the state, but then actually 3C and 3E also say will revert to the state. Does that mean we're recommending denial on all three of them?
No, 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 that's the language that's found on all of these licenses.
That says will revert to the state?
There might be a trade-in in one license for another.
Yeah, they're just switching licenses.
Oh, I guess on 3D and 3A, it doesn't say that. Maybe I, maybe I haven't paid attention to how, what, how things are worded.
Different liquor licenses, different liquor license types have different abilities and requirements from the state. Some have to revert back to the state when we're going through situations like this, and some do not. So it's just that there's approximately 20 different types of liquor licenses, and they all have different ways that they are handled.
So would, as councilmembers going through our agenda, would we know that we're recommending for denial if...
Yes, we will make the clap very clear.
But on here, like, because it doesn't say that, right? So you're just saying...
No, on 3E, it does.
Oh, 3E is the one? Oh, my gosh, I was looking at 3B. Okay, I was so confused.
3...
Yeah. 3E is the one.
3A is withdrawn.
Correct.
3E is...
Recommendation for denial.
Is recommendation for denial.
And there, there's a huge paragraph that says that, so, okay, that's why I thought you said 3B, and so I was like, how would we know that it was being...
B is an A.
Recommended for denial. Okay. Yeah. Scott thought he heard that, too.
Which one is being withdrawn?
A.
3A?
3A is in apple.
Yes.
3E as in...
Edward.
What is it?
Edward.
Edward. Edward is for denial. I said egg, but Edward sounds better.
All right. Now, we're now moving on to July 8th.
Right. So we're ready for item, this is a presentation for item 5A, 5A and 5B.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff McVay, and, oh, today's July 1st, so I'm calling myself manager of Urban Transformation since we're in our new budget year. With me today is Jimmy Trachio, Downtown Transformation Project Manager. We're here today to talk about the Eco Mesa East MOU, which is a development proposal for the Green Lot. The Green Lot is the property immediately behind Milano's Level 1 Arcade Bar, so some of those places that you know well. In the summer of 2023, the city received an unsolicited proposal to develop the Green Lot. We entertained that unsolicited proposal for a couple of reasons. One, the success of Eco Mesa on the Purple Lot has given us good reason to understand and believe the developer could deliver a similar type project on the Green Lot. But also, the developer was actually very instrumental in the city and helping the city obtain and be able to purchase the Hibbert Garage, which has provided benefits that you will see later on as it relates to parking proposal with the development. Just give you a quick overview, the Green Lot is a public parking lot, it has about 105 parking spaces in it today. I know Councilmember Freeman, Councilmember Spilsbury, parking in these projects are an important topic. We will, I promise, we will have a slide to, to address those later on. This is a quick view of what we're looking at as a proposal. The developer, Mr. Sprague, is behind us. This is early renderings. Just know that the architecture will move along as we get further on, and as there's more commitment from the city to be able to justify a little bit more spending on architecture. We're looking at another six-story building that includes two to three decks of parking as well as six stories, five stories of residential. Much like Eco Mesa, this is around 100, 110 units of residential. Jimmy is going to walk you through the memorandum of understanding and the deal points.
All right. As Jeff mentioned, there's a minimum of 100 market rate to luxury sustainable apartments that will be part of the project. There will also be 2,000 square feet of commercial retail space, which will be along Pepper and on McDonald facing the street. And then also the multi-story parking garage that Jeff mentioned, we're going to have 74 contiguous public parking spaces within there, and then resident parking as well. With those 74 contiguous spaces, there will be a perpetual easement for the city for the public parking. And then at the city's request, we'll be able to request the conduit to support level two chargers in the garage. And then the developer will also take on operation and maintenance of the garage during the term of the GIPlet. There will also be wayfinding component signage for the garage as well, designing and structure of an outdoor plaza, which will be on the southeast corner of Pepper and McDonald is the current plan. And then the potential installation of a solar project on top of the Pepper Place Garage, which would provide some covered spaces on top of the garage for most of the rooftop of that garage. All right. Also, as a part of the developer obligations, they will be using City Mesa Utilities, provision of a business plan, including a budget pro forma, to make sure that the project can support itself, and then the demonstration of their financial capacity to successfully complete the project. On the city side, what's expected of us, the agreement not to solicit or entertain any development proposals during the term of the MOU, the relocation of 30 permit parking spaces that are currently in the Green Lot to the Pepper Garage, and then also a parking license for the developer to have up to 70 spaces in the Pepper Garage. This is for, for potential tenants in case they need an additional space for their vehicle. This specifically was made possible by the council's decision to purchase the Hibbert Garage, so it freed up, it will free up spaces in Pepper Garage, so we're able to support development, more businesses and things with that. Let's see, we also looked at 100 of those, the 230 freed spots within that garage will be opened up.
So I just want to pause here and kind of summarize that again. So the Green Lot today has 105 parking spaces. Eco Mesa, as part of Eco Mesa, the first version, we required that it was a one-for-one replacement as part of their development. All public parking spaces had to be redeveloped as part of their garage. As part of this agreement, because we are able to move around 230 city employees out of the Pepper Garage and free up all of those spaces, we are committing to move 30 of, we would be committing, if council approves this, we would be committing to move 30 of the permit parking spaces, just those ones that today are permit parking from the Green Lot, and they would still be permit parking, but they would just be relocated into the Pepper Garage. We would also then provide a parking license agreement for an additional 70 spaces. The development will itself park the units, one per unit, the 70 spaces are there as an option for, for tenants that may have two cars, where they could then enter into an option to rent an additional space within the Pepper Garage. That would leave us still with 130 spaces within the Pepper Garage that were freed up for additional incentivizing of new businesses or other developments down the road.
All right. I have a question. What about public parking?
The amount of public parking stays the same inside of the Pepper Garage as it is.
How much is that, Jeff?
There is about 500, there's a little over 500 spaces within the Pepper Garage, and I'm smiling as I say this, during the daytime, during the week, there's less than 10 spaces that are public spaces. All the rest are permit spaces. So the, it's easy to maintain the public spaces. The reality is that we'll have 130 spaces at the end of this that we can take away permit signs from, or we can leave them permitted and offer them up as, as part of another project. But the, what's available to the customers that come down here today is the same as what it would be to, I'm sorry, whatever. The number of public spaces that are available for customers tomorrow will be the same as it is today.
But they'll be from the current lot over to the Pepper Garage?
No.
No, we're talking about the Pepper Garage, just talking about the Pepper Street Garage, which is mostly city employees, some tenants, and then there's, what'd you say, 10 public parking spaces? That's it. Most of it is city employees are parking there.
But if you are a customer of Milano's, and you're just coming down to pick up your instrument, you will still have 74 spaces available to those customers underneath this group.
Underneath, there's 74.
Only the ones that are today permit parking, where you have to have a permit to be in the Green Lot, those are the only ones moving over.
Okay. And there's, that you said, it said like 100 units?
100 is the minimum, it could be up to 110.
Okay, so, but there will be one per spot, per unit?
Yes.
And then still 74, though, public?
Yes. And the MOU, this is getting into the weeds, but the MOU does state that the city can't use, we can't relocate permit parking back into those, like, back into those 74, because that is what we need to maintain as, as public customer parking.
So we have permitted parking today in the Green Lot, along with the public parking. The public parking, one-for-one, will be replaced under this building. The 30 or so permitted parking spaces, they have to have a permit, they pay a permit, those will move over into the Pepper Street Garage, and they'll continue over there. In addition, we'll provide for 70 parking spaces for the tenants of this development to also purchase, up to 70, in the Pepper Street Parking Garage. So that's why it's very important, we worked with the developer, we couldn't do this still until we knew that we had a place for the city employees that are currently parking out. There'll still be city employees parking in this garage, but there are other that have offices almost adjacent to this parking garage. But many of the other employees who kind of walk from this campus will now be able to park in the, we're calling it the Hibbert Street Parking Garage in the near future.
In the near future, soonish?
November, we're hoping to have, November, December, we're hoping to have at least the first floor open for employees, well, I guess all floors, but we won't have elevators and, anyway, we will have, we'll have places, it's another conversation, we'll have parking in the Hibbert Street Parking Garage.
Okay. So it should all be done though long before this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, yes.
And another note, I think that it's kind of important, this, this option for those 70 spaces, it's only for the first year. So after, this is meant to determine whether or not the demand for parking exceeds the amount that's available. A lesson learned from Eco Mesa, version one, is that there are people that still have two cars. And so this gives us the opportunity to address and provide that parking, but if this fills up with people that all have just one car, at the end of the year, we, we get to have those 70 spaces back. So they have to exercise the option, essentially.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask about that, because I think public parking is a premium downtown, if you want to park for any events, so the more spaces we have for public is, is important. So, so you're saying one-year term on the 70 spaces, and then you'll evaluate it after that?
So if they exercise...
And then a five-year term, it says five years after that?
Yeah. If they exercise the option within that first 12 months, then they, then the, the option is a five-year term that can be renewed two times for a total term of 15 years.
And then after 15 years?
We'd have to renegotiate.
Gotcha. Thanks.
And hope that less people are driving.
Jeff?
Yes?
Before we leave that slide, just to confirm, so the project has a level of parking just like the existing Eco Mesa does, right? So it has a space for all the units? So this 70 spaces in the Pepper Garage is in addition, just to be kind of a grace to any extra parking that's needed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next point, part of the GIPlet agreement is for eight-year tax abatement. As part of the minimum public improvements for, to support the tax abatement, there's three things that are being considered at this point, the potential solar project on top of the Pepper Garage, the public plaza space, and also a monetary contribution that could be used towards homeless affordable housing programs, another solar project or other things that could benefit the downtown and the city. Also, we're going to do a customized review schedule for construction plans and applications, things like that. They will have a city staff member, which will be me, as their point of contact on the project, so everything they needed to, to have addressed, they could go through us for and get their answers.
Dave?
This is currently public property, so there's no taxes being collected, but still we're doing a GIPlet, and is there some payments in lieu of, that would include like potentially paying for a solar project, or what are the potential revenues to the city on this piece of property that we're going to receive in lieu of taxes, even though we were never receiving taxes on this piece of property from the beginning?
So Mayor, I'll try to, I'll try to keep GIPlet at a high level and not get too deep in the weeds. The, there's a few things. We have to show that at least that the city or the public is returning a benefit to us that exceeds, doesn't exceeds, but is at least a substantial amount compared to the, the taxes that are abated. We have interpreted that to mean that it has to be greater than 50% of the value of the taxes abated have to be returned as public benefit. So the list that Jimmy has described includes several things that, that once we are able to put some time and design to, we can actually quantify monetarily how much those are valued at. So that solar project, if we, if we agree to, there's a value to the solar that goes above the garage, but then there is also a value to the covered parking, because we charge more for covered parking than we do for open parking. The public plaza spaces would be in the public's right-of-way and creating a pocket park that is, that is available to all the public as well as the residents. We don't know what the total tax, until we get into the development agreement, we won't know what the total tax abatement is, so we've put this last one, that monetary contribution, that is kind of the catch-all. If the, if there's a delta between 50.1% of the public benefit and what is actually, we can quantify from the other elements, then we would fill that gap with essentially in lieu payment to the city. We would then be able to use that in lieu payment for things like addressing homelessness or, or affordable housing or redevelopment initiatives. And in addition to that, and we didn't mention here, but we always will have an in lieu payment that goes to the school districts as we've done with all of our other GIPlets.
Great. Thank you.
And the next one, the city may be reimbursing the developer for certain public infrastructure improvements that support a broader downtown area, and then also a provision of available impact fee offsets for the previous development that had been on the site in the past. And then finally, the purchase of the land will be based on a fair market value. We'll do an appraisal for that.
When will the purchase, when will that be decided? And when will the purchase take place?
We will enter, once council has given us action, taken action on this, our next step would be to commission an appraisal, and that will be the basis for part of, all of our negotiations for the final development agreement and JPL agreement.
Or this is just the MOU to set the kind of framework, we have to work through the particulars in the development.
Got it.
Jeff, so on, excuse me, page seven, city will partner to provide support in a new required rezoning process. Is a rezone needed? It's Form B code, can they opt in?
We don't believe so, but there will likely, there will be planning processes that the city will be a partner on. If this is more of a catch-all, should there need to be rezoning, we will be there as the city, as the property owner, we have to partner in those applications.
Okay, thank you.
And we're happy to take any questions. This is, again, July 8th for action.
Okay, just to approve the terms of the MOU. Okay. Counsel, any additional discussion on this? All right, well, thank you, this is a lot easier, because it's the second, it's a rerun, right? And congratulations again, Mr. Sprague and everyone involved in the success of the first version of this. Thank you. Next staff presentation?
Yeah, the next one's 5B.
I didn't want you to go on summer break without enough, without enough time with me. Again, Mayor Counsel Jeff McDay, manager of Urban Transformation. Today, I'm very pleased to be able to present to you an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement for ASU Downtown. This is also on counsel's agenda for action on July 8th. Just to frame, oh, I'm sorry, I should note that Mr. Neymarck is on screen with us, should there be questions for ASU, as well as Elaine Beecher is in the audience as well, and Susan as well, thank you. Just as a refresher, we currently have an intergovernmental agreement that was approved in 2018. The site plan that's on the screen is the, is the three-phase project that that anticipated. As we all know, based on the picture, the footprint of Site A got much larger, and it precluded the ability for us to actually do Site C as it shows on the site plan. We have also, following development of the MIX Center, realized that the city would like to have a little bit more of a driver's seat position for Site B, which is 51 through 55 East Main in front of the Art Center campus. So that kind of necessitated the need to renegotiate the IGA as well as to identify additional sites, since the sites on the city block proper were no longer as viable. I'm going to quickly go over and give you a summary of the amended restated intergovernmental agreement and the business terms. So the major terms, we are identifying three potential development sites. Those are the current post office, the public library parking lot, and the municipal building. These are sites that would be available for an ASU development, a new facility. We also identified two partner locations, and that is the, what we'll say the former council chambers, where we sit today, once the new council chambers opens, as well as 51 through 55 East Main Street. I'm going to talk quite a bit more about 51, 55, as it has some wrinkles to it. Another primary point, business point, is that this would, this IGA would set the framework for renegotiation of the lease for the MIX Center. Currently, the MIX Center is a site, is a site lease, I'm sorry, is a, is a ground lease, a building lease. We lease the ground and the building to ASU, they do not own the improvements. As we are moving forward, ASU has a desire and the city is supportive of them owning the improvements while we will continue to own the land on a long-term site lease. So we did not have that established for the MIX Center in the current lease, so we would renegotiate the current lease to give them a purchase option, or the option to take ownership of the improvements, once the city's bond debt, any public bond debt has been retired. It would require though, in order for that to happen, ASU would have to continuously program consistent, consistent with their requirements for academic programming, students and faculty that we have in our current lease. Okay, so first, I'm going to talk about the potential development sites, the three potential development sites. So this is, these, there are certain terms that apply to every potential development site, no matter what, and then I'll go into each potential development site and talk about the unique elements for each of those. So for each potential, for each potential development site, we will establish what we call a development determination period. That's the window of time in which the city and ASU have to come together and agree whether or not we are going to develop the site first. If we agree to develop the site, whether or not it is a joint development, meaning the city and ASU both contribute towards the development, or whether it's an ASU-only development, meaning ASU just themselves moves forward the development. If it's a joint development, the city is obligated to be the manager of the design and construction project. If it is an ASU development, ASU's responsible for managing the design and construction project. If we are doing a joint development, it requires us and ASU to agree upon an initial project budget, as well as how that is going to be funded and how that, how it's proportionally shared between the two entities. We will also, by the end of the development determination period, be required to enter into a site, negotiate and enter into a site lease. That site lease will include all of the normal terms of the lease, but it'll also include all the minimum ASU requirements as it relates to academic program, the number of students, number of faculty, and their operations and maintenance requirements. If, for some reason, we are not able to come to agreement on all of those terms, by the end of a development determination period, essentially ASU's option for that site goes away and it becomes, well, it's always been with the city, but it no longer has any kind of encumbrance from the IGA. Again, this is related to, this is applicable to all three potential development sites. During the development determination period, the city commits that we will not encumber the site in a way that would hinder or preclude the intent of this IGA. For all three of those potential development sites, ASU would own the improvements either after 30 years or the retirement of municipal bond debt, whichever is later. We will negotiate a lease separately for each one, but the terms that will be applicable to each would be that the initial lease term would be for 99 years, that that lease could be extended after year 75 of the lease, if ASU makes significant capital improvement investments in the building. And then that at least would be extended by the lifespan, the, of the commercial lifespan of that capital improvement. So the maximum lease extension that could be put in place is 99 years. We will negotiate rent individually for each property. ASU will have responsibility for commercial subleases, and they'll be responsible for funding a reserve and replacement fund, similar to, those are similar terms that we have with the MIX Center. So now I'm going to go into each individual potential development sites and talk about what's unique for each one. So the first one, Site One, is, is the post office site. The IGA specifically acknowledges that the post office is subject to a third-party lease for the post office, and that is the intent of the city and ASU to retain a post office function, a retail post office function as part of any future development. The development determination period for the post office begins the day that the IGA is signed by both parties, and ends on June 1st, 2025, which is the day that the third-party lease ends and the, and the property reverts back to the city's control completely. The construction for an ASU project would have to happen within five years, would have to be completed within five years of the effective date of any site lease that we negotiate. And during the term, any term that the postal service has a lease or a license within this building, the city will retain ownership of that portion of the building in which the post office is located, so that we will continue to be the landlord of the post office long term. Site Two, this is the Mesa Public Library Parking Lot, for the public parking lot, public parking lot. The development determination period begins on, again, on the effective date, the date that the IGA is signed by both parties, and will expire 10 years later. That development determination period could be extended up to three times for five years each, for each qualifying development. So if during the first 10 years of this development determination period, we complete a project on the post office site for an ASU facility, that would extend the development determination period for the parking lot, parking lot by another five years, so that would take it up to 15 years. That could happen up to three times for a total term of 25 years, which is the same length as the term of the IGA in total. Because we don't know when, when a potential development could come in, we can't, we can't guess as to how long construction would take, so each construction on this site, construction will be negotiated separately with the lease. Big, big topic for this one is, and ASU agrees, if there is going to be a development on this site, there will have to be a solution for replacing any displaced parking, public parking that happens with the project. Site Three, the municipal building, 55 North Center. This is a unique one in that we are not, we do not, as a city, currently have plans to move people out of here, so the development determination period would not start until the city gives notice to ASU that by a date certain, that we know that the building would be available for their use. And then that, then it would expire two years after that notice. And then construction would have to be completed within four years of any site lease that was negotiated during the development determination period. Moving on to partner locations and specifics related to partner locations, the first is the city council chambers, current, former city council chambers. Once the new council chambers has been completed, the city will provide ASU the opportunity for a non-exclusive right to joint use of the former council chambers in the form of a license agreement. The city will work to design and construct improvements to the former council chambers, and we'll consult and work with ASU to ensure that the kind of improvements that we're doing will be able to be beneficial to their academic uses. Any ASU license agreement would have to be in support of the direct academic programming that happens at the MIX Center today, or other ASU facilities that could be happening in the future. If, for some reason, the city decides that we aren't intending to use the council chambers long-term and that we anticipate releasing it out to a third party, we would give ASU the first right to lease the property. Okay, so 51 through 55 East Main Street, I'll start as a partner location. As a partner location, this would be a project in which the city would play as developer, it'd be at our cost and expense. We would provide ASU a right to a certain portion of the property as a potential tenant, with the lease terms to be negotiated, and city will, we will consult with ASU on the design, assuming that ASU intends to lease a portion of the building. Given the nature of this site, and the interest for potential third-party partnerships, we also have given the option for this site to be converted to a potential development site. So if the city chooses, we could say, this is no longer a partner development, partner location, we want to make this a develop, potential development site. Then we would follow through the same pattern as all the other potential development sites, and then we'd have to agree with ASU whether or not we want to develop the site. If we want to develop the site, would it be a joint development in which the city and the ASU both financially participate, or if we would allow ASU to develop the site as developer? If we are doing, if it does convert it to a potential development site, the development determination period begins the day we notify ASU that it's available and ends five years later. We would have to have all the same agreements, leases, academic programming, all of those initial concepts, budgets, all of those would still have to happen. If we choose to do this as a joint development, the city can, can choose to transfer ownership of the land to ASU, but a very important point, that if we choose as a city to have this as an ASU development, we are required through this agreement to transfer ownership of the land and the improvements to ASU. And then the final point, we presented to counsel a feasibility concept for this site, it has a vision attached to it. We want to make sure that no matter whether it's an ASU development, or whether it's a joint development, or a city development, that it's going to be consistent with the city's vision for development of that site, with an architecturally significant mixed-use high-rise building that can accommodate retail, office, residential, institutional, without having to change the floor plates. Now, going over just some, the big terms outside of, specific to each site, again, the IGA has a full term of 25 years, or depending on how fast we move, if we happen to expire all of the development determination periods, it would be the earlier of that or 25 years. We in the city, city and the city will consider additional public open space as part of any of the potential development sites, so there could be the opportunity to include additional green space, similar to the plaza at Mesa City Center. We don't address parking, those will be considered on a case-by-case basis with each project as we negotiate it. ASU will be responsible for all O&amp;M, with that, this one exception, that in the case, say, of the post office, if the, if the post office remains and the city is landlord, we will have a share of O&amp;M costs that we will then be responsible for. ASU's going to use all of our utilities, including solid waste. The only caveat to that is that if the city's solid waste service is not able to meet ASU's sustainability goals, then they would be able to not use the solid waste service. And then, much like the MIX Center, we will be obligated to jointly develop a security plan for each building, that I think by the end of it, we'll have a joint security plan for the city center and ASU all together. So next thing to happen, well, counsel action on the 8th. Assuming counsel action, we have, the clock is already ticking, we have less than a year to get the negotiations for the post office site completed and in front of counsel. We also start preparing a request for proposals, assuming a city development of 51 through 55 East Main Street, and we will start design on the former council chambers in coordination with ASU. Now, I'm happy for questions, I know I covered a lot, there's a lot to unpack here. Mr. Neymarck is also available, should there be questions specifically for ASU?
Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury.
Well, I know, given the time, I don't know how long of a discussion we're wanting to have, but I do have a few questions. On Site Three, I know you said parking will be by specific each project, but on the library, we're specifically saying that it requires a solution for replacement of parking, but on Site Three, we're not saying that they have to provide that same parking there?
So Site Three, yes. Well, the assumption is that Site Three, because it will, wouldn't, if we are to, if it becomes a potential development site that ASU is moving into, it will no longer be city offices. The need for the parking goes away, and when we say parking will be addressed on a case-by-case basis, we will look at each ASU, potential ASU facility and say, is there parking that's necessary to come with this project, and then we will consider where and how we would accommodate that.
There, I mean, there is public parking in there after hours, so when people go to the plaza, or go to the chambers, or something, people are parking there. So, I mean, I would like to see parking, but we're not, we're not saying that they have to have any public parking.
Not on this site.
And listen, this is a framework-
Yeah, oh, I know, I know it's all-
Future councils, when these agreements come back, every one of these, frankly, the council's going to have, there's nothing compelling you to do anything.
I guess just because it's included in Site Two, that's why-
I think it's a fair point. I think when we have downtown events, parades, whatever, maybe there's some discussion with ASU that maybe after hours, or after whatever normal hours, that those can become available, whether it's Mary Main Street, it's the parades-
Yeah.
There's always events, there, those spaces do get used for the public.
They do, yeah. Okay, next question, on 51, 55 East Main, since there's like two options, the partner versus the potential development, how is that decision made?
It's at counsel's discretion.
All of this is at counsel's discretion.
Right.
So we'll come to you and say, here's what the plan is, you know, whether ASU wants to be a partner, or whether the city's going to go and partner with a developer to build this out, those will be future discussions.
Okay, but so as far as approving, this IGA is approving both of those options, looking into both of those?
It just kind of gives a framework, that if the city decides to build it out, we'll work with ASU to see if they want to be part of that. Or the city may say, you know, we're not interested, we're, ASU's got a really good idea, and we'll convey the whole project over to them. But we get that choice.
Come back to us when that, when those decisions.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so I guess my main overarching question in all of this is, most of this looks really familiar to me, because we already went over it. So can you just tell me like highlights of what's been changed? Because I'm not picking up immediately what the changes are.
There is actually very minimal changes, minimal is probably, just slight changes, that's probably too soft as well.
Medium amount of change.
Because we spent, we spent a fair amount of time discussing, there's a lot of in-the-weeds changes. You know, there's things related to who is responsible for leasing first floors, and who has approval authority over what's, what's on the first floor, it's a lot of detail that wasn't necessarily here. The length of the development determinations periods on a couple of sites changed. The nuance of whether 51, 55 was a partner location or a potential development site, that was a significant amount of change. Before, we just had in there, the option was- Before, we just had in there, the option was partner or we'll work together. Now we've kind of flushed that out and got a little bit more detail to it.
So it really is all just in the details that's been, okay, that makes me feel a little bit better about my memory. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Haredi has his hand up. Let's hear from Frankie.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe this is a question for Rick or Jeff, if you, if you've had these discussions around. I remember on the post office, some, some of the studies happening, but overall, what, what is it to leverage what's happening in the MIC Center and add more of that content as far as classes or just trying to, trying to understand the, the additional learning that's going to happen as this expansion happens in downtown Mesa? So maybe that's an ASU question.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Haredi, I think that's a great question for, for Rick to field.
Thank you. It is a great question. Thank you, Councilman Mayor and Council. We have several programs that we're thinking about in this, in this general area. One is eventually the MIC Center and what we have down there is going to hit its capacity with the current program. So we want to have the opportunity to expand some of the ASU programs that are already in central Mesa. Secondly, we believe that there will be an opportunity to locate some creative technology academic programs that are currently in Tempe, that some of those will advance and expand in downtown Mesa or even just relocate. Thirdly, this is an area of a lot of emergence of new ideas and technologies, and we are in the process of creating new programs that are not currently majors at ASU to meet this changing landscape. And they can locate here. And then, you know, there's also additional opportunity to get businesses to locate in some of these locations and continue to expand the entrepreneurship activities. So we really have a lot of ideas for how this, how this will go. But I'll just say this in general, it's all related to the creative technology sector as our current programs are.
Thank you. Frankie, does that, any, anything else from you?
No, that was it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, other questions? Ms. Duff.
So on the library property, we talked about that, I don't know, a month or two ago, about a solar project over the parking. So is that really on the table or what's the term for the solar or is?
It's moving forward.
Okay, so is that really on the table then, to use this as a development site?
You know, ASU would have to come to us with a proposal that we think is worthwhile to pursue.
And?
And replacing the parking for the public in front of the library. Because the library's not going anywhere. We're not replacing the library, it's just the parking lot is going to be, you know, we're going to have to have a discussion about, well, how do you build an ASU building and still have enough public parking spaces?
So we're leasing the solar project. And I assume there's a term on that and there would have to.
So it may be, it may be a while before that project becomes feasible.
Okay.
I, I could give a, I might invite Mr. Boucher up, but I, I believe that the terms of those leases, they do, they would allow the relocation of that solar. So if, if, if there was a compelling enough project that the city wanted to move forward with it, you know, much like the parking, that project has to find a solution. And the rooftop of the building could be enough of a solution that you just lift the solar and move up.
Yeah, and there are buyout provisions throughout the term of that contract. So depending on what the project might look like, we'd have to work with ASU either on relocating, replacing, or buying out Solon, who would be that, that solar developer.
What's the term on that? Is it a 10?
I believe it's 25 years.
25 years, okay. Thank you.
So is that not considered to have encumbered the property then? Or is that not during the determination period?
So the, the language that we use is, is very specific, that we can't encumber it in a way that it defeats the purpose of the IBA, IGA. Solar over top of the parking lot does not defeat the purpose of the IGA because it can be replaced. It can be removed and replaced.
I have another question, if that's okay. Why is the land ownership situation different with 55? Or 51, whatever, 51, 55?
I'll, I'll give a, Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. I'll give my answer and if, if it isn't sufficient enough, I'll give recommend it to weigh in as well. If ASU is going to move forward with an ASU development on this site, it is going to be with third parties, not as a true, fully academic building. It would be a model in which there would likely be a private developer partner as well as private entities that would be leasing inside of the building. So in order for ASU to have the, the, the ability to enter into those agreements to, to, to work with those developers, they would need to have the land.
Well, that's, that's how they're going to get financing, right? They can't get financing if they don't own the land. So that's why they would want it. Very, very reluctant. This was one of, when Councilman Pillsbury asked what changed, a long discussion about the disposition of the property was a major discussion here. ASU obviously is interested in having long-term property interests in these projects. We're concerned about maintaining the overall purpose and use, you know, that meets our vision for downtown. But when a private developer comes into the picture, they're going to want and probably need to have access to the property to use that as a financing. To already get financing for their project, they're going to want to be able to show they have control, significant control for a long, long period of time of the, of the property.
So, but that's different for the other two?
Because the other two, we're assuming those are more ASU-specific properties, they're going to lease from us and over a period of time, then we would convey the title.
Because this one might have retail or housing or like mixed use or something.
Exactly.
Yes, where the other ones are good, like academic buildings. So that's a pretty big difference between.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I think the goal is to get something amazing at 51, 55. And if we can accomplish that with, without any city investment, but still reap all the benefits of having a, a high-rise building that has iconic and, and significant economic value to the city and not do it on the city dime, I think we're open to, to receiving those proposals. Mr. Summers, did you have a question?
No, I'll just add one thing. It says fiscal impact, none at this time. Just listening to this, it sounds like there are going to be some fiscal impact, but all that's going to depend on which route we take through this IGA. So we'll see this.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, we just, we just don't know what we don't know yet. So as we go into the individual negotiations of each site, we will be coming back to council regularly and you will be well aware and, and we'll have to decide on what the fiscal impacts you're willing to accept.
Okay, that's what I gave you here. Thank you.
So I think Chris answered my 99-year lease question because I thought, well, that's, why would someone want a 99-year lease? And I think it's due to financing and just showing, showing that. I do like the discussion regarding the retirement of bond debt for the buildings 30 years and stuff. I think that's a smart move for the city to reduce that debt before any conveyance of any land. And then I was wondering, other typical lease agreements with other municipalities with ASU, is this comparable in other municipalities compared to what we're doing? That might be a Rick question.
Councilmember Freeman, can you?
Well, like downtown Phoenix, Phoenix has lease agreements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Comparable, Mr. Namark would, would be the first to, to let us know that, that Phoenix is much nicer than we are at the city. We are, we, we're holding their feet a little bit better, more to the flame and not, and not as generous. So comparable in terms, they, they own more land. I, I think they own most of their projects in Phoenix, so from a, from a.
So they have ownership versus lease?
Yeah, so ownership of the building is, is, are comparable to ownership of the land.
Right, but they built, you know, it'd be, it's one thing if someone comes and says, we're going to put a law school in downtown Mesa. That's a different conversation than, hey, we're still trying to decide what it is. At this, I'm just saying, at this point in time, it would be hard for us to say, oh, sure, we're just going to sell you the property and they hold on to it for 20 years, then decide what to do. We're holding on to this as long as we can until we know what the vision is. And to the council point of, how's this leveraging, right? What this land that we have in downtown Mesa, which is not a lot, how do we leverage to get something that benefits our community overall? And I think we both have mutual goals. It's just it's too early in the process for ASU to say, it's the next law school, it's the next whatever. So we're still, when we have that vision, I think it'd be easier to come with details and the specifics about, you know, the property and our involvement and all those discussions that'll take place in the future.
Yeah, very good. And I think the land we have is very strategic too for any development. Thanks.
Ms. Pillsbury.
I realized with my questions, I didn't add any positive comments. So I do want to thank everyone for all of the work that's gone into this because it's obviously been a lot more than I could realize. But I, this is super exciting to me. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of stuff we have to figure out, but I think it's been proven that ASU is a great partner in downtown and that it could really shape out that vision that, that a lot of us have for, for the downtown area. And I, this is all exciting to me. Again, lots of questions of how exactly things are going to go, but I think this IGA is so important that we get going on it, get moving and start making all of those big plans so that things can actually happen. So thank you.
I would like to extend your, your, your kind words to Kelly Widowmore here in the front seat. Without, without, without her ability to navigate the, this document, we wouldn't be here yet today.
I, I want to second what Councilmember Pillsbury just said, that let's, this is a lot of work. There's a lot of things to talk about and really it's an agreement to agree because we don't, you know, we'll have to just see what transpires over the next few years. And future councils will really, but this puts them in a, in a position to, to do great things. And, and so let's not lose sight of the fact that, that ASU is an amazing partner. When you look at the success that they've provoked in downtown Phoenix, I mean, that's a wonderful model for us to aspire to follow. And so I'm grateful to ASU for the, the great partnership in the MIC Center and these, and other, other properties. If for generations to come, we have thousands of talented, smart ASU kids getting on and off the light rail and activating our downtown, that will be an amazing partnership that will pay dividends for generations in our city. So, so of course, we have to sweat the details and we will, and we're not giving anything away. And we don't ask ASU for, for anything that's not, that we're not, that we shouldn't expect to get from them. But I think this, again, just lays the groundwork for, for some amazing things in the future. So thank you to ASU and thank you for the work that's gone into this. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Duff.
I must try and in because I'm super excited. I just am kind of overwhelmed right now because a lot of the documents are just uploaded and I haven't read through the, all the, I know we have one more week to go, so. But I want to say thank you for pulling this together because one of the concerns we have in building our arts and innovation district is having that physical place in which we're building and leveraging what's going on in ASU and the digital arts and the creative technologies. This being a, a place that that lives. So if you're in this world of digital arts, creative technologies, and you have all this education around that, you need to be here. This is where ideas will be created and turned, incubated and turned into businesses. And with our Mesa Business Builder at the studios and the Workforce Development Center on the lower floor, which is high, has a high degree of technology in it, it is to, this is more than just ASU coming here with students. That's great, we appreciate that. But it is in the bigger vision of creating this arts and innovation district, that if you're in this world of creative technologies, you need to be in Mesa, Arizona. And while you're here receiving education and conferring with other people around the subject matter, we have the tools and spaces to incubate and develop businesses and ideas. And I think that's a huge part of the why of ASU, beyond education, which is important to us, but it is in business development and economic development for our city, well, beyond downtown, but for our city as a whole, to be in the digital world and technologies and business. And I think this is excellent an opportunity. I, I think the, the future is ours, you know, that we have, I'm glad we're taking this step to make this vision come true and make that transition beyond a wonderful downtown to being a place of a vortex of creativity and innovation right here in Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. All right, so this is, again, is on our agenda for a week from tonight. And so we'll continue to ask questions and look forward to additional discussion then. Thank you. Mr. Brady, any other staff presentations for next, for the July 7th?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next item, I know we're running a little late to get upstairs, but the next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Council, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to beat Ms. Pillsbury for one.
I was going to say, talk about the things I was at.
Well, anyway, we had last Thursday a paramedic graduation for Mesa Fire and it's one of the first six-month programs, so they're excited to get out in the field. This morning, we did the police evidence building ribbon cutting and that was really fun to see that. And I just wanted to reinforce that our Mesa Police Department and their street crimes unit, they did an illegal fireworks seizure, seizure, which was really good.
Huge.
Like over a million dollars worth of fireworks that were seized. So happened this last weekend and Mesa Fire medical assisted with that transport. So, yeah, I just want the illegal fireworks people out there to know that we're watching, right? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Pillsbury, did you cover everything? Wow, okay. Anything else, Ms. Duff?
Yes, last Thursday evening, I was a panelist at an evening with City Nerd. I don't know if any of you are a nerd like me about urban planning. There is this YouTube, Ray, I, forgive me, I forget Ray's last name, but he's City Nerd on YouTube. Anyway, he was here in Phoenix and it was, we had this discussion with followers from across all the cities and talking about walkability and parking and livability and all these transit. It just went on and on. It was very engaging. It was the night of the debate, so it was a nice distraction to be able to attend this. And thank you to, so many Mesa people showed up. Thank you for showing up because it was over in Phoenix and it's about urban discussions. But thank you for being part of that. It was really lots of fun. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us?
I appreciate it, the great events we've already talked about. A few days ago, I attended an Arizona Tech Council meeting talking about the electric vehicle economy that is growing in our state and in our region. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. And then I think it was Friday, Tom Perez, the White House Director of Government Relations was in town and we had a, an immigration advocate roundtable talking about some of the new executive orders that have come out in the last few weeks relevant to a lot of people in our community and appreciated the opportunity to participate in that. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
All right, Mayor, thank you. Our next council meeting will be Monday, July 8th at 5:15 for a study session and then followed by the council meeting at 5:45. And then our next council meeting will not take place until Thursday, August 15th at 7:30 a.m. And we look forward to seeing everybody at the Arizona Celebration of Freedom, July 4th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
Great. Let me just put in a plug for the naturalization ceremony on the Fourth of July. If you haven't been to one of those events, you really owe it to yourself and particularly to your children. It's the most patriotic thing you can possibly do on the Fourth of July, so please come and enjoy the fireworks at 9:00, 9:30. But if you really want to have a patriotic experience, come at 5 o'clock to Centennial Hall for the naturalization ceremony. Thank you, Council. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Pillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We will adjourn and reconvene upstairs.